I'm not pushing pizza. I will.
We don't have a nica or both eye. You're okay.
Don't be embarrassed. Don't be embarrassed. I think we're past it.
We don't care enough.
That's true. No hundreds of dollars.
Shh. You want that?
Where are you?
Who brought her in?
All right, I've got five o'clock. We call today's meeting to order, Monday, May second, two thousand and twenty-two. Role call, we have selectmen Howdy Goodwin, Mackenzie Jewett, Kevin Buck, myself, Jamie Thurlo, town clerk Katie Dandiran, town manager Jesse Dunbar, and town attorney James Collier. Eric called and said he got stuck on a job. He just could not make it here, so.
I'll make a motion to excuse Eric Eaton.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to excuse Eric Eaton from tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, adoption of agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to change on the agenda? Okay, approval of minutes. We have the minutes from April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, approval of warrants. We have warrant one oh six for three thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars, forty-four cents. Warrant one oh seven for nine thousand, eight hundred, ten dollars and forty-six cents. One oh eight for four thousand, ninety-one dollars and eighty-six cents. One oh nine for nine thousand, six hundred, nine dollars, ninety-nine cents. And one ten for one hundred, seventeen thousand, seventy-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Make a motion to approve warrants one oh six through one ten?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants one oh six through one ten. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have an executive session titled Consultation with Legal Counsel.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for consultation between the board and its attorneys concerning pending or complicated leave. As permitted by one M R S A four oh five six point B P.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session under title Consultation with Legal Counsel as read by Mackenzie. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, take your pledges.
By the way.
Learned a lot lately.
Have you heard about that? Or is that just possible?
It's just possible.
What's that?
Here she is. Come here. All the way live.
Okay, we are out of executive session at five twenty-eight. All right, next is regular business. We have a consent agreement with Acadia Wilderness Lodge.
I'll make a motion to sign the consent agreement between the town of Tremont and Acadia Wilderness Lodge as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to enter into a consent agreement with Acadia Wilderness Lodge as written. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, maybe it'd be time for me to have a few words to tell you what this is about.
Yes.
So what happened was there were some allegations about some overbuilding on the Academy Wilderness Lodge or Academy Wilderness Village, I guess it's called, the smaller site. And there was some confusion about cabins versus yurts. And I know the Sesame Tree is different in Canada than here. We have Canadian Sesame Tree. But, and then you have American Sesame Tree there, it's down in Winnipeg. But you still do square pegs in round holes, right? Round things in square holes. So the yurts and the cabins were different. And then the cabins had little porches up front. So the calculations of the square footage were a little odd. And I tell you, from day one, I thought the cabins were weird because it was a campground with cabins. I just thought that was strange. Anyhow. Because of, I forget the name in Latin, but there's a a force, in French, in the force majeure, it's called, because of worldwide events, right, the COVID, supply shortages. There was a lot going on last couple of years, and apparently the Hopkins and whatever the hell their LLC is called, I don't remember what it's called. I think that's called.
And you won't know.
Not that. There's a peri-loss in LLCism. They decided to change from cabins to yurts. And at that time, there were two instances. Greg Johnson, back here, and Mrs. Hopkins, Kenya Hopkins, two different times, requested some changes to the, the plan to go from cabins to yurts. And the then code enforcement officer, Jesse Dunbar, now town manager, agreed to those, but it was a little murky about who showed whom, what plans, at what time, how big the yurts were going to be, and so on. But the phrase that Mr. Johnson used was they're both same size. And so, even though they were approved as being about the same size, which is a vague term, and remember the round base, square, whole thing. And this went on, and eventually then what happened was that the yurts that were, in theory, going to be built there were going to be a little larger than anybody expected, and there were going to be more than eight of them. And suddenly, the complaint was that it wasn't a minor change, it wasn't about the same size. It was not, it's not a significant change, it wasn't minor. Which is all he had authority to approve, was a minor change. So, I basically framed it as in they're overbuilding the permit. So, as in all these situations, the primary thing to do is to contact the party involved. Normally, the code enforcement officer would call the alleged violator. But in this case, they were already represented by counsel. So I contacted their attorney, Andy Hamilton, and I said, Andy, you guys are in violation. And Andy said, what do you mean? And I said, listen, we're going to pull something out. So there was a series of emails and phone calls, and we worked out a deal. And they admitted they were wrong. And we agreed that there would be a notice of violation and immediately a consent agreement that followed. They would pay for my attorney's fees to deal with this matter and the, a small fine. Roughly the amount of the attorney's fees and fine. And after that was worked out, Mr. Larson sent a notice of violation last week. He went up to the site, he looked at it, there are indeed eight yurts there. And only concrete peg, that's all there's going to be, is the yurts. And if you look at all the square foot generally, although it doesn't have to be exact, it's basically what was going to be there before, the cabins. Mr. Larson sent them the notice of violation. In return, the Hopkinses, is that how you say that? They sent James, Kenya Hopkins, sent a letter, basically apologizing, saying they want to work with the town. They're very sorry, and so on. And their attorney, Mr. Hamilton, expressed to me that they were regretful that this whole thing had worked out this way. I know Mr. Johnson has been regretful as well, but it turned out like it did. So now, they're going to pay a fine, they're going to pay the attorney's fees, and we're going to let him have what the, the code enforcement officer approved, and they're not going to rebuild the permit. So it's pretty simple. Now, very briefly. As to the any other thing that's going on, such as the case in the business court, which I like to call A W L number one, that is a appeal of approval. That has nothing to do with this. As to A W L number two, which is the appeal of the, the larger care ground, that has absolutely nothing to do with this. So, suggestions otherwise are, I'll smoke and mirrors, or I'll talk about ghosts, I mean, you can talk smack all day about stuff, but you gotta back it up with facts. Lastly, I noticed on your agenda, this is not a public meeting, a public hearing. It's like everything that you do in Tremont, it's a public meeting. So the public naturally has the right to show up, and it's on, is it on TV or? On TV. Recording, so you can pick up the thing later. But there's no right for anybody to talk. You can talk amongst yourselves. At all times in any meeting, however, the chairperson, in this case, Mr. Thurlo, has the discretion to listen to people. If you want to, and to cut them off, and cut their time down to thirty seconds, the smooth repetitious things. You can open it up for comments, and you can cut them off if you want to. You can say, listen, you're repeating what Buddy said over there. So that's up to you, but you don't have to listen to them, if you don't want to. So I suggest you get a vote, and just go watch the playoffs. Questions?
Yeah, I guess I will let, I'm willing to let comment, as long as people be respectful and make it brief and have a short time. I don't want to put a timer on each person, but I will, I will shut it down at any point that I feel like it's getting out of hand. I think that's more than fair. Okay, yes.
I have a question. The part of what is in question is whether or not this is going to be a case of the A W L one and A W L two will be considered one property. If they are considered one property, does the no further action clause then apply to the new property?
I would ask James to answer that question.
Yeah, the answer, the answer there is no.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Actually, this is a follow-on to that. The agreement itself says, I quote, "This agreement constitutes a full and final settlement of all matters in dispute between the parties, their respective successors, heirs and assets as applicable." It doesn't say a full and final settlement of all above-described matters. It says of all matters in dispute. So I would just raise that as perhaps a drafting issue, something you might want to consider a minor fix. That is extremely broad language. Full and final settlement.
Yeah, if you want to change that, great. I don't think it's applicable, because what's going to happen is if you get in the court of law, what would happen would be you'd say, this was a matter that was before you, at the time when you did the consent agreement, this little eight unit yurt thing. And that's what you were dealing with. It's an excellent point. You want to scribble that in, not sign it tonight? Go back to Mr. Hamilton and the other side? And it's up to you.
Okay. Is there? Yep.
Yeah, I have a question about the precedental value of this proceeding and, and whether the slide board has a concern that by doing this, the next applicant who presents information about what they intend to do but ends up doing something different will have the understanding that by paying a small fee, they can do what they want to do, other than what they promised they would do. Is that of concern, the precedental value of this settlement at this time? Does that tell others that basically our ordinances and violations of them are insignificant?
I'll have James answer that, but also I would like to answer part, the first part of that, which would be, I don't believe they're getting away with whatever they want, is more or less what you're saying. They are removing the parts that were overbuilt. So that would not be getting away, so that would be untrue, I believe. What, James?
Yeah, I, I echo that exactly. The, I think the word, the person to search for is precedential. And in zoning matters, there's no such thing as precedent. The whole concept of stereocentesis and precedent, and then in this case, technically speaking, would be law of the case. Doesn't, in general, does not apply to zoning matters. So that's point number one. If you did this, in other words, if you did this now, and then tomorrow you turn around, you can do something to somebody else. So there is no precedental value, legally speaking. Secondly, there's no getting away with anything. It's not like, you know, we, we thought we were going to do X, and then we built a golf course and four-strip clubs and quarry. You know, this was a slight change from this to that. And then we, we, we looked at it and said, oh, that's not right. All right, let's, let's make it right. That's all this is. So, the idea that you're going to do something, get eight yurts rather than eight cabins, if the yurts were, I don't know if they're bigger or smaller, but they're around the same size. And that the cost of that is a whole bunch of pain and effort, about, what is it, forty-five hundred bucks? Plus whatever they paid their attorney, and those guys, they, they aren't cheap. Mr. Pottle's a rich guy over there. I mean, those guys shared a lot of money. So all, you're going to spend all that time and effort, you're going to pay a bunch of attorneys in Bangor. You're going to pay for the town attorney, you're going to pay a fine, all to go from yurts to, from cabins to yurts, and they're around the same size? I mean, that's, that's outrageous. It's just not how people do business. And it's pretty inefficient. So, that's, the answer is no, 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 and no.
Okay. Yes.
Why wasn't Ms. Chow not lived in?
I'll direct that one to James.
It's in the West.
Any of these discussions?
I'm going to do that.
She was, she did not find out about this.
So?
Does, is it necessary that she found out about this?
No. All right, so, let's say I represent the town, right, and you built your deck too big. So Jesse gets Mr. Larson, right, so you complained about him, his deck's too big. Ah, there you have that deck too big. So Mr. Larson comes out, he goes, hey, your deck's too big, you can't build your deck that close to the water, or whatever that, right? And I know you're represented by an attorney, so I don't call you, or have Mr. Larson call you, I call your attorney. Normally, if you didn't have an attorney, Mr. Larson would call you. But in this case, you have an attorney, so I call your attorney. And I say to the attorney, no, your client's deck's too big, right, we're not doing something like that. And then, she says, oh, I need to get in on that too, and you say, what the hell for? Well, I talked to the neighbors about it. I talked to him about it too, and I talked to him about it. I tell all the business, you think the police go around and say, somebody might be charged with something, let's discuss in the community, all the the business, it's an investigation between the parties. Ms. Chow represents some other neighbors, God bless her, which has nothing to do with what we're doing between them, between them.
She's representing me as one of those neighbors.
Okay, sure.
In, in the appeal of this A W L one.
Right, right.
So that is, any of it has nothing to do with.
Don't be obtuse. I mean, seriously.
I've never been obtuse in my life.
No, I, I want one person to speak at a time.
I understand that. I've never been obtuse.
Please be respectful, like I asked.
I've been obtuse, but not intentional.
Yeah.
But to finish your question, though, she's representing you, but that has nothing to do with this. This is a, an action between the alleged violator and the town. I've been involved in dozens of these in half a dozen different towns, right? I remember one in Mount Desert, Teal, Teal, Teal Harbor, they were arguing about a line. And there was the line, and there was somebody building a rock wall in the midst of all this. What am I going to do? Call the other attorney? What do you think about this? It's between the town and the alleged violator. That's who is between.
So the, the language of this seems as if it would absolve the applicant from any action going forward, if the appeals.
No, no.
It, it just really seems like that language again, although here.
Right, but it doesn't.
It seems that way in the language.
That's right, no, it doesn't.
It doesn't.
No, let me explain. If, if you're accused of breaking an attorney, right, and four or five other things, I keep going back to you, you look at them guilty type. So you're accused of a bunch of stuff, right? And, and you go before the judge, and you're talking, you've got a, you're, you're, what do you call this, a public defender, there's a prosecutor, an A A. And you make a deal for lesser charges, plea bargain. The next day, you go out and do something else.
But this isn't something else, it's the same, it's the same violation.
Right.
Being discussed.
Alleged violation. Alleged violation.
For now, no.
Right. A violation is when, I heard this gentleman scoffing over here, a violation is when you go to court and the judge finds that you were in, in violation. That's a violation. An alleged violation is when it's alleged that you violated something. I don't take that lightly. I don't know, but you do, but I'm an American. And as an American, you have the right to go to the court and to be presumed innocent until proven guilty. By the way, you're enjoined for potential violations outside.
The agreement itself appears that the applicant is alleging that they themselves have committed violation.
They have, they have agreed to wrongdoing, yeah.
Yeah. Do you want to come from there?
It's nonsense.
It's all.
It's madness.
Well, what do you want, what do you want to do? Put them somewhere across and crucify?
No.
No.
That's really not.
That's, it's too much, no, I do, I would like to see the process play out. I mean, I was here.
So, so, wait a second now, excuse me, excuse me. I, President Trump, excuse me, excuse me. The, the reason I answer, I say that is the town, under main law, has discretion, right, to deal with these matters. If we didn't, have you ever seen that movie Reversal Fortune with Jeremy Irons? We would let other people do it. So we wouldn't have a code enforcement officer? You would do it, or this guy, Mr. Higgins would do it. I mean, you can't have that, because Mr. Higgins, he's a tough guy. He and his brother, they're tough. It wouldn't be good enough that we got him for forty-five hundred bucks. Mr. Higgins might want to get him for twenty thousand. So the code enforcement officer does this, and you have discretion as to how much to get from him.
Alan, it, it seems odd that we're not going to let the process play out on this.
What process? Now, let me, what process?
All right, James, enough, you're not interrupting. Now, um.
No, hang on just a second, Stephen.
I'll, I'll let him.
What?
The reason I continue this is I think we're getting some good information, but what process?
Yeah, all right, so, I was here a couple, about a month ago, with all the signatures for Citizens of the Tishers. And I was told, you know, by the board, to follow the process and trust the boards. I feel like in this situation, why would we not just follow the process, trust the boards? And they end up very well in the same, with the same resolution.
But, but tell me, what process?
Uh, the process of, well, currently, right now, it's in business court. They send it back to the board, and they, you know, work that chance at it, and then it can go after the board of appeals, and they end up needing a nicer deal from the Hopkins.
So let's.
But I don't see why not let it play out.
So let's be clear, though. Let's not be unclear. I was already accused, the person in back, of being obtuse. Let's be clear, not obtuse. The process in business court, or the process, I've been here twenty-some years, I haven't seen process. The process in business court is a process in regard to an appeal of an approval. I don't think I could be less obtuse than that. I mean, you want me to say it again? That's what it is. The situation here is an alleged violation, an admission of a wrongdoing, and a consent agreement. That has nothing to do with the approval. So to answer your question, I wasn't trying to interrupt, I was trying to get at your point. The process, I love to play it all day, it's playing on, I got Zachary Bradenwine and Ms. Chow down there litigating it. That's playing itself out. This has nothing to do with that. As far as, like, what, what's, what are you talking about? I said, they don't, they don't intersect.
Sure, let me just continue. Yeah, so if, if the business court did send this back to the Board of Appeals, would the Board of Appeals?
No, 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 we go back to the Board of Appeals.
No, it would go to where?
Well, if it went back to the Board of Appeals, you're right, but it would be to remand to the code enforcement officer to do X. Go ahead.
Yes.
Yeah. Take your time, take your breath, take it some time.
So yes, all right, so yes, and if there was, if that, if that happened, and there was a decision by the Board of Appeals to remand to the code enforcement officer?
Yeah.
Or the planning board?
Yeah, code, uh, code enforcement.
I believe it would go to the planning board, right?
Code enforcement officer, I think.
Sure?
I don't know.
Because the statement didn't go to the original, when it should.
Planning board, yeah.
Um, so we already were kind of off process there.
What, what do you mean? What do you mean?
Well, we did go on to the planning board. That's the point.
What should have went to the planning board?
The reason this is being settled is because it didn't go to the planning board and should.
Oh, says you. Says you, are you God or a judge? You're not a God or a judge. So.
You like, you like that what it says in the.
That's, that's an allegation, right? That's an allegation that it should have went to the planning board. And perhaps you're right, I don't know.
I believe it says in the language of this agreement.
Perhaps.
Pretty short, fellas.
Yeah, well, whatever. But it did.
All right, so, let's continue on my currently hypothetical discussion here. If it was remanded or sent back to the planning board, now anything, if given anything that they decided would have no effect because of the language of the agreement, saying this absolves of that.
So I don't know.
Um, the, of, the, the point that was made just a little bit ago here where let me just save this real quick, yeah.
I think the answer to that is no, by the way. Go ahead.
The agreement constitutes a full and final settlement of all matters in dispute. So there can be no more.
No, let me explain.
So.
If the court says, which I don't think they're going to do, obviously, but if the court says to Ms. Chow and to you guys, their clients, the very narrow, small, you know, the one percenters, that, that, this, in a lot of this, this, I forget what it's called, but this extraordinary appeal out of time that you, you have justifiable reason to appeal, on the time basis alone. And then, after that's done, that's a high hurdle. Once that's done, the court says, and you know, I don't think they did this right. And, because the, the decision they don't look at is the board, is the planning board, the original stood, they got the board. So they remanded to the, the, um.
Board of Appeals, I believe.
Board of Appeals to go back to planning, go back to the planning board. Now, the planning board says X, Y, and Z, right, you can have three yurts. This agreement has nothing to do with that. We can't usurp the power of the planning board's jurisdiction. As they say in Latin, strictly central, strictly and narrowly, we don't have the ability to usurp their jurisdiction. So that's why the answer to your question is no, because if it went back to the planning board and the planning board said, hey, you can have fifteen yurts.
Despite the language that says full and final settlement?
In this agreement, yeah, you can do it. Because we're not, we don't think the planning board, right?
I think that's got to be obtuse, maybe. I'm not sure your opinion on that is necessarily final opinion on that.
I, my opinion on anything is not necessarily final. But that's my legal opinion.
And couldn't that therefore lead to a situation that would just, you know, lead to more litigation?
Sure.
You know, they're saying it's a full and final settlement, but then the planning board says, has something else to say?
I don't think so.
I know, but, but the point of that is you don't know, and you don't know until you let it play out.
Well, I don't know anything, right? Excuse me, I'm obtuse now. If you want to.
No, don't put words in my mouth. I'm not being hurt.
Well, I'm trying to be polite too, but if you tell us the, the selectmen, as the time goes on, you want new selectmen or new select board, they should fire me because I'm giving bad legal advice. I put up for twenty years, Wayne Liphart, sitting in the front of every meeting that I came to. And Wayne Liphart, Liphart says, you're giving bad advice, the town's getting bad advice. I wasn't always right, but I did the best that I could. All I can do is say to you now that I'm giving the board the best advice that I can. I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm trying to answer your questions. And my legal opinion is that this is a good deal for the town, because it recognizes it was a problem, and we got a consent agreement. As the planning thinks of, I reject the premise of your question, because you're trying to say, by your question, the question itself insinuates that the two matters are connected. that the two matters are connected, you see what I'm saying? When I say they're not. So I have to reject the premise of your point, because I don't think the two matters are connected. And if, by the way, by the way, if you think they are.
No, hang on, there's still a discussion going on.
If you think they are, I could, I don't want to give you legal advice, so tell your lawyer that I think you give illegal advice, but you can tell her for me. She can go to the business court. That's the reasonable answer, right? She can go to the business court and say to the judge, Duddy, Duddy, whoever it is. Nice fellow. She can say, I think this is connected. She can move, she could say, you know, I saw they did this consent agreement, what the hell, this, this is part, it should be part of this matter. And if the judge draws it in, you can have the satisfaction of saying, you were right and I was wrong. If I thought that was gonna happen, I wouldn't have had this advice tonight. But that's your, that's your recourse. That's her recourse. That's right.
Okay, I vouch for only one comment for each person, but I'll let you speak again, just please make it brief.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, frankly, I think this is why it is worth the boards considering just adding those few words to the third page of the agreement. The above described matters, because this language is so broad. I would agree with counsel's description of an individual complaint and the narrowest, but for this language. And let me also say, Judge Michael Duddy of the Business Court, maybe a nice guy, in fact, I do think he is. But he reads every word of what is before him and interprets strictly. I know him, I have dealt with him. The reason I raise this concern is, I believe that change will protect the town from litigation and potential adverse decisions.
Okay, thanks. All right, yes, sir.
I'm, I'm just a bit confused. Is the normal process for this type of situation to sign a consent decree that we've done this previously?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The last one they did was the guy who dumped over in, uh, Lepus Point. Now, I guess it'd be legal to grow on the dump, but. Over in Lepus Point near, uh, Mrs. Ingles' property, where they used to have the dam over there. And he decided he wanted to grow a bunch of marijuana, so he, he didn't want anybody to see it, so he had the trees there, four feet high. And he cut the trees off at four feet high and left all the brush around. And then tried to go and dump underneath. And I don't think the town was that concerned about going, don't, don't. That's a different matter. They were concerned that the trees had been cut, the shrines on. So we got in a big argument about it in those, uh, time, time sign. I could go along with that.
Okay, so it's not unusual of the sign that could set up a decree when the code enforcement officer finds a situation like this.
Because your other, your other avenue, you can do one several things. You can go, phone the enforcement officer and say, look, you're in violation, you can fix that. And the person fixes that, so it just goes away, right? You can, um, you can do, join the third violation, which means you go to court. And you, you, um, uh, do a N K action, a rural K action, and you try to get them to find there. You can do that. And there's a process which I dislike, but litigators in part will probably like, which is, you could refuse to litigate and put that in writing, which you should never do, which you could, and then that can be appealed on the N B to the Board of Appeals. So there's several methodologies. Well, one of the most common methodologies is for the party you would go along, have a temporary. It's very common. It's just, it's almost exactly like the plea agreement in a criminal case that you see on TV, it's very similar.
All right, um, Jane, what?
Okay. If, if we add the language the lady's concerned with to the document, is that a problem, James? Um, I believe.
Well, you have to ask Mr. Pottle, I think the thing to do would be.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, I, I believe they were represented by.
Yeah, the thing to do would be to take a brief recess, Mr. Pottle and I will upstairs and I'll and see if we need, they want to add some words or.
Okay.
But you've gone over this, their attorneys have gone over this, everybody agrees.
I'm always willing to learn. You know, I've been accused of being arrogant once or twice in the past. I mean, it's really difficult. It's been really difficult, but as the youngest ten children, I always, that's funny. Because I had that behind me by my six sisters and three brothers. So I'm always willing to learn, if there's a good point, and I think it is a good point. So, I think the best thing to do is Mr. Pottle and I go and chat it up.
Okay, if we wanted to be a part of that conversation, would we put it in an executive session? So if we.
No, no, I think the, have a recess. I don't think Mr. Pottle has an interest in the rest of your agenda, certainly I do not.
Yep.
So I think what the appropriate thing to do would be to table this matter for later in the meeting, Mr. Pottle and I will go upstairs, and when we return, right, I have a butcher tail. You might then go back to this matter and see what we have to say.
Okay, yep.
Could you, just briefly, I, I think it'll only take a few minutes for the attorney caller, I can just look at it quickly. Have the language we think might be advisable.
Why don't we just take a five-minute recess?
Have a recess, yeah.
That sounds good to me.
Yeah, let's go upstairs.
Do we have to have a motion or anything to do so?
No, this is a recess.
What's that?
We have a motion already.
Oh, we have a motion on the floor, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Then you probably need a motion to table a motion.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
If they go upstairs.
Excuse me, hang on.
If they go upstairs and hash this out to, tonight, and you bring it back downstairs in five minutes or whatever, are we still voting on it tonight?
Your motion's still on the table. You're tabling the motion for, uh, a bio break.
Okay. So you'd have to make a motion and second it, Mackenzie, to table it for five minutes, or ten minutes?
You think this is necessary?
I do.
Okay, then I will make a motion to table this discussion for a few minutes.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to table, uh, Mackenzie's motion for, let's say, ten minutes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
So you've decided it's time for break?
Yep.
Okay, good.
I need some water, no, I like water.
Jessica, any water speaking around here?
There's a cooler back there. I'll go, I'll just sec, I can't water.
Yeah, you don't have any, uh, water speaking around here?
No, yeah, thanks. No, that's all right, I tell him what's in there. Yes, well, yeah, yeah. Jane, what are you doing? Okay, we will come out of our break, six oh seven.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yep.
The very eminently reasonable and charming, beautiful Mr. Pottle, and I have agreed, if with the board's approval, of course, that the, uh, on page three, item number one, in the and further clause, in reference to a suggestion from the back here, this agreement constitutes a full and final settlement of all matters in dispute between parties and their respective successors, heirs, and assigns as applicable from activities described in this agreement.
Could you, I, I missed one part of it, could you just read the, the addition again?
So it's number one, in the and further on page three.
No, I, I got that, just, just the, just the change.
From activities described in this agreement. So what we've done is, and by the way, Mr. Pottle, not the Mr. Pottle nor I think that this is necessary, but, um, in number three above, if you look at number three above in the further, the last part, it says, from activities described in this agreement, so we've just repeated it again.
So this isn't necessary, but we'll do it, okay? All right, I'm trying to be clear, too.
If they make it clearer, and maybe it does, so, whom I say?
Okay.
All right, and apparently I messed it all up, because according to Mr. Pottle, I initial it, he doesn't want him initial, he wants for you to sign it, and then you initial the change.
Yep.
And couldn't get it in Word, because it was a PDF.
Yep.
It's a Monday.
All right, so what do we do about Mackenzie's motion right now? We just bring that back to light?
Bring the motion forward, and, uh, I think you're ready for a vote, let's see.
Yep, okay.
There's a burning desire to listen to more people talk about it.
Okay, um, it's been moved.
So, should it say as amended? Just add that to the motion, I mean.
If you want to.
Well, I mean, it's the.
It's there.
It's the contract, it's in the contract, yeah, it's in it, so I wouldn't even amend it, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
Do I have to make it again, or we're good?
You can say as amended, as amended by Mr. Collier or Mr. Pottle, so if you feel like it.
It's up to you.
No, whatever, if, if it's not necessary, I think we're fine.
Clear, it's, yeah, okay.
Okay, it's moved and seconded by Howdy, um, is there, yeah, we've gone through a discussion? Okay, uh, all those vote, all those in favor? Okay.
So, I don't know what you're gonna do, uh, whether you're gonna sign that version or.
Yep.
Your client's gonna, are they in town?
We'll, we'll need to get their signatures, maybe it would happen. Or if you can give me the copy, we'll.
So I think the, the thing to do, with Mr. Pottle's permission, is to, to not use this version, but indeed, just take that language and put it in a, because I have it in Word.
Oh, that'd be great.
So that we then sign one, a copy of it. So what I'll do is I'll email to you and Mr. Hamilton and Hamilton Jr., the, um, the version of that, with, you know, with just that change. And then, and before you go, can you make a photocopy of that and give that to Jonathan, so we can take that with, just that page?
Yeah, that would be helpful, and I, I can get the signatures in line, too.
Oh, but I should, why don't you do it? You guys got more staff up there.
So do you need us to sign it tonight, Jane?
No, that's what we're saying, well, because, because it's messy, uh, you already made the motion. You can do it with the town manager, come in and do it individually and sign it, because you sometimes other things. But we'd rather, both Jonathan and I would rather that you sign a version that's new year.
Okay.
Not scrawled on.
Because I don't mind, whatever.
So, if, with your permission, I'd like to go home.
Yes, I think you're good now.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, next on regular business is the Marsh Road Fire Pond. And I believe we have the fire chief here to explain for us.
Honeybuck, hello, see, two, four, six.
They're getting, they're getting her ride.
Kirk, we're getting her ride, aren't we, we're getting her ride?
Okay, what's, yeah.
So, I guess originally the, uh, the park, shared part of that property, uh, that ground pit, it was just that it was on the land that we have to turn that, I don't know, park.
Yep.
And now it's an actual park, it's signed, and so it was two acres. But now that the, uh, the town or schools have leased that property, I'd like to revisit the opportunity to take that, um, ground pit that's between a half to three quarters of an acre, and re, uh, replant it to make a viable water, fire protection source for the school and house, I think we're carrying. I just, uh, I had a couple of rough estimates of what it would cost to just have a machine in there for a week. I don't know if it'd take a week or if it'd take a day with a big machine, but, uh, I just think it's a resource that's there. Some of the pools and irons that we have are on private property, and this being town property, I think it should be a priority that we can make it viable and, um, deeper, I, I just want to approach it.
Um, who's voting the bill? I'll be directed.
All that freehold money, right?
What's that? No, I mean, I, I didn't know if the fire department is, is doing this, or.
It would be built into our budget, so it's the town paying for it, but it comes through our budget, but, um, it's just, uh, we'll wash, we'll clean, we'll wash it through us. But, um, so what the next step would be to go to the E P.
Yes.
And there, we, um, originally put a draft iron in there with money from Maine Forest Service, so they gave us a grant to put the pipe and hoses that are in there now.
Yeah.
Uh, if there is money available, but we're, we're talking five to six, sixty-five hundred bucks.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Not breaking the bank.
Yeah.
With the school being right there, and, uh, the school looking at building expansions and additions, if we have a more viable water source other than the Atlantic Ocean, which is right there, um, then I think it, they'd help us more when, um, they talk about addition or expansions to the school that they'd be, uh, less likely for us to, um, require more safety and fire protection. The second part of that is, um, with the apparatus we have right now, we potentially would have, um, four thousand gallons on each side of the town. And if we reevaluate our I S O rating, which is insurance safety rating, um, we'd be able to go from a nine to an eight B, which is just one step down in this whole pyramid of evaluating. And, um, it would save if that would help us get to that level, including with some of the other things that we're working on. It would allow us to save about three percent and on, uh, each person's property, home insurance policy. So, townwide, it's that five thousand dollar investment should see, um, recruitment into people's pockets, so that's the direction we're heading in.
Sounds great.
Sounds good to me. Make a motion to authorize the fire department to make improvements to the fire pond located on town land identified as fifty-three Marsh Road on Tax Map Five, Lot Two, pending all applicable state and local approvals, approvals are received.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the fire department to make improvements to the fire pond located on town land identified fifty-three Marsh Road on Tax Map Five, Lot Two, pending all applicable state and local approvals are received. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you, Dee. All right, next we have pole barn bid specs. I know we've talked about this so many times.
So many times. So, yes, the, these bid specs were drafted, um, back in July of twenty-one. You originally had thirty thousand dollars in the F Y twenty-two budget for the construction of the pole barn. Um, that clearly wouldn't be enough, um, due to increased costs, and I think it was a little low in general to begin with. Um, so you, uh, encumbered an additional thirty thousand from leftover F Y twenty-one funds for a total of sixty thousand. Um, in July and your October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting, you tabled going up to bid due to the high cost of building materials, um, and you made a motion to table it until spring. Um, so here we are, spring, um. As far as the pole barn replacement itself, um, the original, uh, proposal that was talked about and the bid specs were drafted for was an exact replacement of the tent, um, in the exact size, um, that is there. Um, part of that, I believe, that the former manager's reasoning was to, it would be quicker and cleaner without planning board review if you increase the size.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's been a couple discussions amongst people as to whether it should be attached to the existing garage instead of separate where it is. Um, uh, the public works foreman Troy, he, um, would like it to be separate as it is now, that's his preference. Um, but he would like it to be larger, if possible, than the existing, um, pole barn. But he would like it to be larger if possible than the existing pole barn. With the addition of the Bobcat and the attachments it has and may have after town meeting, there's more need for cold storage typically. They, in the existing one, they have a lawn mower and they put a truck in it, and one truck, one of the small trucks, but there would be no room for Bobcat attachments. The plow attachment has been delivered for the Bobcat and it takes up significantly more room than you would think. So, with the pending possibility of purchasing a sweeper and mower as well, there's certainly a need for more space. The, Troy is confident in the fact that he does not need windows, doors, floor. He would prefer it be a pole barn just as it is now, open front. Those were his requests, and he wants me to pass them on for your consideration. I don't think building materials are gonna drop anytime soon.
I don't think so.
I think they have leveled slash come down from where they were last summer and fall, but if you want to consider going out requesting bids or if you want to still move on.
My only thing, I know I said before, but I, I don't know why he would want a separate, honestly, for the building. The only thing I was thinking, I know I've said, is this lower side where they park their pickups a lot of times, there's more room on this side towards the, towards the road here. And just put a shed roof and a wall and a back wall, you could even leave the front open, and at least it would be, I mean, you're, you're using one wall, so it should save money.
Yeah.
And if you ever want to pour it, I would think, can't you, Howdy, pour, you know, I mean, pour in there after too, if they wanted to pour. I can just, I can see it, like, they're gonna put all kinds of stuff in there and then they gotta say, geez, we should have put a door on the front.
I have some, you know, concerns about in this corner being wedged in there. That wall is accessing proper access. I know there's, I know he mentioned he was concerned with attaching it on this end. The septic tank for the Public Works garage is right behind where it would attach. On this end, the tanks for the waste from the garage, the fuel, the... Those tanks, hazardous waste tanks are on this side where it would be behind it. I think this side would still have adequate access to pump the...
I was thinking.
Where there's water.
So, he, it was just access that was, was his concern?
Those are his main concerns.
Um, the only other thing I'd say is, if we're gonna do it, I don't know why not make it two base. I mean, eighteen by twenty-five is not big enough for two.
No. He, the dimensions he had drawn up this morning was essentially the same as the large bay on this end, which is twenty-seven wide by thirty-nine wall.
That's what I was gonna ask you. How long is that building deep through it?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, so let's just call it forty just for, if you did a twenty by forty, you know, or eighteen, I don't care exactly, but I mean, that's, that's quite a bit of space. That should fit a lot of stuff in there, I think, like.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with that. I think that's a good idea. Make it twenty, that's what.
Yeah, and just, but the whole, you might as well use that side of the building and just run it down.
Right, I mean, the expenses for, yeah.
Yep.
Using less.
Yeah.
Yep, and if they're gonna frame the front, I've seen some, if you do a shed roof, you'll know what I mean. How, if you do a shed roof, then you get out on this wall, they'll actually frame in that gable a little bit so that if you ever do want to put a door in there, then it's, it's an option to put it in. More so than if you just follow just the shed roof, don't put that, that end in. If they, I don't, that's my two cents on it.
I, I'd basically follow the same roof line and go one twenty feet. That's gonna give you enough to put plows and sweeper and all that in there and useful equipment. But I, if you're gonna do it, I think that side's too small.
Yeah.
I, I think it's foolish to go to all that trouble and not have a bigger space.
Yep. Yep. I'll stick with thirty-nine.
And you just really...
And sorry, is that gonna be attached to your old garage?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, is attach it to the side.
The other thing to think of, the electrical hindrance for that is on that same wall.
It's on this lower side towards, okay. I wonder if you did a, instead of continuing the peak, if you did a shed roof, would that be able to go around it? You know, if you, if you came off this way?
You'd have to get someone to look at it.
Okay, yeah, so that would be obviously one big...
Worth our own electricity in the grass alley.
I hate, right? I think he knows things.
Yeah.
So, the existing pole barn's eighteen wide, Troy had written down twenty-seven, which is the width of the large bay. Do you wanna go with one?
How about twenty-four?
Twenty-four?
Yeah, these odd ball measurements. He must be measuring interior. How about that's...
About by the full width of the build, but he wasn't going by the full width of the building, was he?
From the back?
Yeah.
Thirty-nine is what I meant.
Oh, he did, he was, okay.
I'll double check. I'll see what the tax creates.
That's probably interior.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably floor.
Jesse, can you have that room store the Rio in there too?
Hmm, no. All right. Twenty-four by forty attached to the north.
Northish side.
Northish end.
You know, I have no big deal with it being on the other end. I just thought it made more sense. This is nice, flat-looking ground, this beautiful area to build on versus that kinda seemed cramped and looks like it could be wet too where all the, where, you know, smell runoff and everything else is.
Yeah.
And then they could leave the, when the sand hill falls down.
Yeah, that's, yep.
Do you wanna go with requesting a shed roof or matching the roof?
Well, it depends on the electrical, because if you're, if you're doing, if you've gotta go around electrical, then a shed roof will work better, I know that.
It's been almost in the middle.
You could just put a mast up, right? Is it country? Go right through the roof?
You'd have to, you'd have to get the hydro planer out to look at it, because sometimes they don't like their media to be in time.
Yeah.
Well, if it didn't have a door.
Put that door on.
Yeah, I would just have to, have them to look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so the current bid specs have, are requesting as part of the bid removal of the existing structure.
No.
I wouldn't do that, no.
Might just leave it till maybe we can take it down ourselves.
I was gonna say, public works could do that. There's not much to that. I'd, I'd match the roof. I don't know if you just...
That'd be your preference, if possible?
Yeah. Do you have any, what do you think, Harry?
I was gonna tie a shed roof in, it's gonna be kinda tricky anyway.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of cheap. That's all I'm thinking of money-wise, whatever's cheap.
You could always put the entrance on the new, the side of the new one and just run a line to connect them to. Correct? Tell them to wake up. You, you could just move the entrance and run a wire inside to connect it. So, yeah, so we could work around that.
I just know once they get using it, you can just see where it will go. Say, geez, could we have a door? And then it'll be, can we have a slab? It'll, because it will get used and they'll store, and they won't want snow on everything and...
Yeah.
Does the... Because that one's snow on.
I don't know if the frame needs to be perpetuated either.
I was just saying, I was looking at it, and because this one's a steel frame, but...
Yeah. I, I don't think I spec that out.
Okay.
I just was pricing perpetuated lumber yesterday. I don't think we won't buy that. It's insane what it's costing.
Keith, you'd probably know, who did like Ridge Helm keys? You know that? They do the wooden frame and the metal siding on it?
Yeah, those sandhills, they do that one.
There. If you could do something like that, similar to that, you know, having the six by sixes with the bat, two by four battens or whatever on there, and then put your metal siding over it, that would be probably quick and easy, I would think.
We're pretty engineered crossroads.
Yeah, okay.
So, you'll have a stand over there.
Yep.
I think we can take a wall right there where it's not standable.
Yeah. Those are good RSP, if people start bouncing off the building anyway.
All right. Can we just rewrite them and put them on your next agenda?
Yeah. Sounds good. Yeah. All right, so we'll move on from that. I guess next thing is the town manager's report.
All right, over the last two weeks, I was gone for part of that time on vacation, but when I returned, I worked on the agenda and meeting prep for tonight's meeting, submitted the annual ARPA report to the Treasury, worked with Maine Coast Area Trust on posting for this week's Silk Road Fishway update meeting, updated the message board with paving info, and had many phone calls and follow-ups from being away, and talked with the planning board chair to get updates on the planning of meeting and pump running that occurred hours away. Office staff, clerks, been busy preparing for the town elections, town meeting, picked up the annual reports at the printers and prepared the FY twenty-two thirty day notices. Public Works picked up truck nine in Bangor after its hydraulic tank repair, switched out the tires, rear tires on the case, checked roads during the storm, there's trees down on Dodge Point, brush removal on Dodge Point, Locus Point, Back Beach, did a road repair to potholes on Dodge Point, finished cleaning off the town office lawn, helped Justin the float, removed trash at Hill Rest and put the trash can out at Back Beach, washed truck two, washed these Sanders and Plows for trucks three and nine, trimmed and bowed town office and solar panels, trimmed and bowed Silk Road picnic area and Ober and Kelly cemetery. Finished sanding and painting rims on truck three, started the rims on truck nine, and collected brush at the lighthouse and Back Beach. Harbor master responded to calls, took a call of a fuel spill in the harbor, worked on the Harvard Committee Agenda Minutes, cleaned up barrels in the parking lot, helped MCM with repairs to the hoist, and had some morning meetings, cleaned up the lower parking lot, worked on Buzz Island floats, worked on the ram, and attended the Harvard Community Meeting. Over the next weeks, I'll be preparing for town meeting, lectures, upcoming week of town meeting.
Hey, Jesse, I'm just curious, where were the potholes on Dodge Point?
Where?
Yeah, do you know?
I, in the, I believe right after the pavement stops, in the first street.
That, that one that got re, yeah, okay, I was, I was wondering how that was holding up.
Yeah, there's potholes there, yeah. And one other thing I wanted to note with the ARPA funds, I learned in the training for submitting the report in the portal that at the last minute in their final rule on the ARPA funds, the Treasury decided most of the uses that you could use it for were dependent on the town showing a revenue loss. Otherwise, you had to stick to the stormwater, water sewer, broadband. You couldn't use it for other governmental funds. They decided that all towns, all municipalities that received the funds may assume up to ten million dollars of lost revenue, regardless of your lost revenue. So, you may tell them that you're going to use it as lost revenue and then you can use it for any normal governmental activity. So, you can choose to use your entire remaining funds for whatever purpose you end up deciding to use it for. So.
And roughly, how much is there still?
A hundred and eighteen thousand.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Jesse. Suggestions for the next meeting? Date of the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to confirm the date of the next meeting from Monday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, at five P.M. at the town office.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting from Monday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, five P.M. at the town office. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, now we have another executive session entitled Personnel Matters.
How do you get this?
Go for it.
I make a motion to find that public discussion of these personnel matters could be reasonably expected to cause damage to the employee's reputation and/or to violate the employee's privacy rights and therefore to go into executive session to discuss the employment, appointment, assignment, duties, promotion, demotion, compensation, evaluation, discipline, and going, not doing well tonight, resignation and/or dismissal of an individual or group of public officials, appointees, or employees as permitted by one M R S A four oh five dot six dot A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded and to go into executive session titled Personnel Matters, as read by Kevin. Is there any, excuse me, discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we got six thirty-six.
What's the fun part? What was that?
We missed that part. I missed it.
Okay, we are out of executive session at six forty-four.
I make a motion to approve the amended employment agreement between Jesse Dunbar and the town of Tremont.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the amended employment agreement with Jesse Dunbar and the town of Tremont. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion to adjourn. Second. All those in favor?